We're going to call this meeting of the Lunenburg Planning Board to order with Mr. Allison attending by Zoom. I will be running the meeting as Vice Chair, and we will open with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Do we have any public comment before we get going otherwise this evening?
We do.
Excellent. Who are we hearing from?
Lynn Mann.
All right, Ms. Mann, the floor is yours.
Hi, hold on a second. Try to get my video here. Hi.
Good evening.
Am I on here twice?
No, the public access is showing you as well because you're on video.
Oh, okay. All right, sorry. That's a little confusing. So, I just wanted to talk to you guys to see what, how you're thinking about solar development in Lunenburg, particularly with respect to clearing natural lands and possibly agricultural lands. I had a little conversation with Adam Burney, and he sent me the solar siting policy, which, you know, overall looks, I don't really understand all this stuff. What I, what I know is that land is being cleared all across Massachusetts for solar. These large solar companies are coming in and just scooping up land, and there's a clause in the, in the Massachusetts law that says that you, towns can't object to it. And so, it's important to have a really strong solar policy. So, what I had looked at, it looked like there were three parcels that, that are allowed in the solar policy. They call it the solar overlay or something. And these three parcels, one of them is cap landfill, which is great. And then the other two look like they're in pretty sensitive wetlands or forested lands. And when I talked to Adam about it, he pointed out that this was Lunenburg Water District, and so therefore it's not likely to be developed. But I don't know why it's in the bylaw as being part of the solar overlay. And so, I just was hoping that maybe we could have a discussion about that. I don't know if you don't want to do it now because you have other business, if there's another time. But I would like to understand that a little bit better. And also, it says that outside of the solar overlay, there's a permitting process, and it includes some things in there like documentation of landscape level changes, including grading, vegetation, clearing, planting, and some other things, you know, that look reasonable. But I don't know if, if that's like an environmental impact assessment, or what would happen like if, if the proposal was on a land that, say, needed to be deforested in order to make it happen. Like, how, how does this planning board think about those kinds of issues? And particularly if a large developer came in and wanted to, to clear the land for that purpose, you know, how would, as a town, we react for that? Would we react to that? And then finally, I'm wondering if there's any way that we can incentivize building solar on built environment. So, obviously rooftops, parking lots on both residential, municipal buildings, commercial buildings, and so forth. And also looking at new construction. So, like, there's a housing project going in up the street from me, and as far, when I checked into like, how are they heating and powering the homes, it was like, oh, no, forced hot air. I didn't get to anybody at the top. But, you know, in new construction, it seems like that's a perfect opportunity for the town to be able to promote putting in heat pumps or geothermal, putting roofs with solar on them, you know, doing more sustainable and, and cleaner energy to power the homes. So, I, you know, those, those are kind of the three things that I was looking at, and I was just wondering if, you know, how this board feels about these things, and whether this is something that you want to look at, whether I could help with anything. That was my comment and questions.
Great. Well, thank you so much for bringing this to us, and thank you for sharing your thoughts as well. So, I, what, what I think I hear you asking for is kind of the board's overall thoughts and not a further deep dive into the current solar policy. Is that correct?
Yeah, I mean, to begin with, yes, that's, that's what I would like to, to do. And then, I mean, if it warrants to take a deep dive, then do a deep dive. And, you know, I, as a citizen, I would be willing to help out in whatever way I could.
Now, Mr. Burney, this is not something that's on our schedule, but it's something that a member of the public has brought forward.
Correct. I mean, I think the board has some latitude. I wouldn't get into a lengthy discussion. You can have a very simple response. I think what's probably more appropriate, and I think what Ms. Mann is asking for, is the board to put it on the schedule and have a time to have a more back-and-forth discussion where there's a little bit more exploration of, of what we're, what we have, where we could go, how we could address some of the topics she's bringing forward. So, I think, you know, if you wanted to make a simple policy statement of your own interests or your own feelings, that's not, you know, you're not going too far afield. I just wouldn't get too, too much in a, in a discussion topic.
Okay. That was my understanding, but thank you. So, I mean, no one person can just kind of unilaterally speak for the board. Is, is there anything the members, current members of the board would want to share some thoughts on before we kind of put this on our chair's list for things to determine if we'll be discussing at future meetings? So, I'll turn to the board and ask if there's any responses people want to have for their initial thoughts they'd like to share with Ms. Mann before, again, we may end up looking at this more in depth in the future.
No thoughts.
All right.
I can speak to that.
Oh, is that Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Mr. Allison, please.
Yeah, so Ms. Mann, thank you for coming. Ms. Mann is a previous member of the Open Space, I believe?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so she's not unfamiliar with the town government. So, with a solar bylaw, we allow two different types of development, one large scale and one small scale. One's by right with certain acreage, and the other one is a special permit. So, there's a bunch of hoops they got to go through. However, it is a state-promoted thing, so the state really jumps in and pushes things through. I'm not quite sure how old our solar bylaw is. I think it might be 12 or 13-ish.
Oh, I, that was something I was wondering, so thank you for that. Yeah, it might be a good time to revisit it, given all the activity that's going on right now.
Yeah, sure. And then what we could do is, is form a subcommittee, like a bylaw review, bylaw revision, or specific for that. You know, probably two members from planning board and three members at large, or, or whatever that make up. But there has been some discussion, there's been this discussion about zoning board appeals wanting to take it as the Special Thermal Granting Authority. That's, that's, you know, up in the air, and then any of the verbiage within the bylaw itself could be reviewed and looked at. I personally am aware of some regulations that I don't think we were aware of when we wrote the bylaw or that were in place in fact. So, some clarity on capacity, on, on limitations by the power supply company, hoop solar mounting and for, for ground mounts, they're somewhat different. And there's, there's feeding back to the grid, grid-connected, and there's non-connected. So, there's, there's a number of moving parts to that. And I, for one, would be very happy to have the public input that we may or may not have had when we put the bylaw thing.
Yeah, yeah, those things are all super important. And I've been working with the Sierra Club at Massachusetts, and we're, you know, we're thinking about maybe trying to draft some legislation that would promote putting solar on the built environment. It's more expensive. It's, it's cheaper, I guess, to clear a forest or put them up on a farm or whatever, for many of the reasons that you just stated, you know, in terms of interconnection and so forth. But there is, there is movement towards this area, and, you know, it's being done in, it's being done in other states. It's, it is like super complicated, and I'm just, you know, I'm just getting my big toe into it. So, I just, yeah, I would be willing to do some research. I actually, I'm going to be doing a little study with Sierra Club, looking at businesses and organizations that have already installed solar, and, you know, what has made it work for them and work well for them, and what have been the challenges, and what continue to be the challenges. So, that's, that's forthcoming. Mass Audubon is putting together a feasibility study, which should be out late winter, early spring, so that could provide additional data as well. There's, there's a lot of stuff being done looking at this issue. A lot of individual towns are looking at it, particularly when they're faced with a large ground-mounted solar project that they're, that they don't want because it would be clearing a lot of their natural lands or, or absconding with agricultural lands. So, but we do want solar. I mean, like, it's, it's kind of a double-edged sword.
What I might suggest is maybe the 23rd of January is, our next meeting will be January 9th. I think with the holidays, it's probably a little tight for people to really wrap their head around this. But I might propose to the board if we put an agenda item in some time, half hour, 45 minutes aside that night, to really start to identify what, what you may be looking for the board to do and what the board may have feelings about. It would give everybody time to maybe do a little bit of research, wrap their head around the thought process, and come back and have a, you know, an energetic discussion that night. And that way, it's on the agenda, and we can get input from folks who may be interested as well as just, just yourself and the board.
Yeah, that would be fabulous. That would be, that would be really great. I mean, right now, I just, I'm just looking to explore. I don't, I, I, I was going to say I don't have a particular agenda. I do, you know, I'd much rather see solar go on the built environment than on natural lands. But, you know, how much does our current policy protect us? How much, how much liability do we have, you know, given that it was written like 13 or 14 years ago?
Yeah, and rooftop solar is by right, so we don't regulate that. It's only regulated by the building code. So, it, you know, anyone who wants to put solar on a structure can do so.
Is that tru, does the power company not have some other, like?
You could put it on. You can't necessarily interconnect back. It depends on, on the power company's capacity. But if, and I know Walmart happens to have it, but if Walmart said, you know what, we don't care about Unatel, we're going to put in a battery bank, and we're going to put in a bunch of PV panels because it's worth it to us, that's a by-right thing, and we can't say no to them.
Oh, that is by right. Oh, that's nice.
So, that's protected under the same clause that, that Ms. Mann was, was alluding to earlier.
Yeah, it's, I believe it's chapter 40.
Forty A, section three.
Section three, paragraph nine, to be specific.
Correct.
Yeah.
So, Ms., Mr. Allison, with you being the chair, although I'm running the meeting tonight, I don't want to just presume to throw something on a future schedule. Is that acceptable for you, sir?
Of course. You are the chair tonight, so, yeah.
All right, great. Then let's put that on for the 28th, you said?
23rd.
23rd. And Ms. Mann, thank you very much for bringing this to us. As Mr. Allison indicates, you're no stranger to town government, but still it's wonderful when any of us are proactive.
Yeah, I wasn't on the planning, unfortunately, I wasn't on the planning board all that long, but I'm, I'm still learning, so, thank you.
Well, thank you very much, and hopefully we'll see, we'll see you on the 23rd.
Absolutely. I'll put it on my calendar. Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, bye-bye.
Great. Do we have any other public comment?
Just, just welcome, welcome Tim to the, to the group. A tip.
Thank you.
Oh, that's right. Thank you, Mr. Allison. Tim, welcome. You're stuck with us now.
Yep.
Ha, 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 ha. Great. With no other public comment, we, next on the agenda is an A&R for parcel three, 255 Sunny Hill Road.
Good evening. My name is Ed McSweeney. I represent the buyer of this piece of property in L L C. The owner of the property, I'm going to turn to my, my left, is Mr. David Mackey and his wife. The reason we're in front of the board for an A&R approval, came to our attention, Mr. Mackey and his wife had put the parcel up for sale, and according to the town assessor's map, it was 31.23 acres. We put a deposit, and then we did our due diligence, and during that period of time, we realized that the property wasn't that. It was actually at 29.89 acres, 1.34 acres short. So, on the advice of our attorneys, both the buyer and the seller's attorneys, we need to correct that so we have, when we take ownership, we have the right amount of land. It also came to our attention because it is, some of the land is in chapter 61B. There is a lien that was placed on it, and that, that's normal for properties that goes on the chapter 61B. So, part of the reason that we're doing this also is that once the lot size is corrected, we can then go in and adjust the lien so we take ownership at the correct amount of land. So, this parcel three basically is 1.34 acres coming out of chapter 61B that will go into non-chapter 61 property, which is right now 4.30 acres. Hopefully, that's clear enough, Adam. You might want to help me.
Clear as my head.
You might want to help me with a little, few more words.
So, the board has seen this at the last meeting to provide the select board with their feelings on whether or not parcel three should be acted upon with the town's right of first refusal. What Mr. McSweeney is, is explaining is, the parcel is placed in chapter 61B, and the lien was for 25 acres, with the belief that there was 5.34 acres exclusive of, I'm sorry, 5.64 acres exclusive of the chapter land. And that 5.64 acres would be equivalent to three building lots. There was no sketch associated with the, the lien, which is maybe best practice, but certainly not legally required. And so, in order to have a, a series of three lots that would be considered buildable, that 1.34 acres needs to come from somewhere. And it didn't exist previously. There was a miscalculation on the land. And so, they can't just unilaterally adjust the lien. It requires the right of first refusal process. So, that's what this is all wrapped up in, releasing that 1.34 acres to create three buildable lots out of this larger lot. Functionally, from a practical perspective, nothing really changes because the belief was always that there was three buildable lots there. It's just a matter of how much land is in the chapter program and how much is, is in the buildable area.
So, looking, looking at the plan quickly to make sure I understand, parcel three is being removed from parcel two and added to parcel one? Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so that would, so then there would still be frontage via parcel one for the A&R requirement?
Correct.
And I don't know of any A&R require, I don't know of any additional A&R requirements that come with the lien being here and everything. Are there other things?
There isn't. So, 61, the whole 61, 61, 61A and 61B are a tax scheme.
Yep.
They have impacts on the use of the land in so much as, once the land is sold or dedicated to be used differently, it enacts a process with which the town has the right to purchase the land first at its fair market value, either determined by a qualified offer or by an assessment that is done by the town. So, I've worked in places where chapter land was subdivided, as through a subdivision, the creation of road and otherwise, but it was never acted upon, so that land continued to be accessible to the chapter program. Now, once this land, and so they're doing these two things in parallel, the A&R and the right of first refusal. So, once the select board acts, which I believe it's on their agenda for tomorrow evening, they'll decide to either, we want to buy this 1.34 acres of landlocked land, or we're going to pass on our right of first refusal, then this sale is, is capable of going through. And Mr. McSweeney then has 5.64 acres with which he can build. Mr. Mackey sells his land, and then we come back and do this whole A&R process again to create the buildable lots.
Okay. Thank you, Adam. I'll turn to other members of the board and see if there are any questions or thoughts from other members.
Yeah, no, not for me. I mean, we've already, we already weighed in on our, our right-of-first refusal thing. We recommend not to act on it. And Adam is correct. It is on the schedule for the select board tomorrow night.
All right, great. In that case, I would be, I would look for a motion.
I would move that we approve the A&R for 255 Sunny Hill Road, parcel three.
And we need a, and we would need a second.
A second.
Okay. In that case, we, we still vote, even though we're not voting.
You're voting to endorse, and it is a roll-call vote because you have members.
Okay, thank you. So, we will, as Mr. Burney said, be doing a roll-call vote. And Mr. Allison?
I'm in favor. I.
Ms. Amanda, I'm forgetting Amanda's last name because I'm a jerk. Ms. Reed?
I.
Jim, I realize I don't even know your last name because I'm a jerk.
Uh, Wills, man, I.
And an I from myself.
Thank you very much.
Great, thank you.
I'll have these two sign this tonight, and I'll figure out getting those. I'm sure.
Thank you. Thank you very much for your time.
Great, thank you. Have a good evening. All right. Next on our agenda is, we have a request for a de minimis change for the Lunenburg Central Project at 475 Leinster Shirley Road.
Good evening. Bill Hannigan, for the record, from Hannigan Engineering. We submitted some plans, which I believe Adam has brought up on the screen to take a look at. So, a brief summary instead of going through the entire letter that we submitted with this, but through the construction, there was processing of materials, and there were some materials that were buried on site that were all clean, but they were either not able to be used or they need to be replaced with other materials that were then brought in. So, there was an excess of materials on the property. So, therefore, instead of hauling the, all that excess material, eight to 10,000 yards of material off the property, we basically realigned the truck storage area at the back of the site and extended the, the berm that was created at the back of the property. So, that, that is the first request, that that be viewed as de minimis change. In concert with that would also be the reconfiguration of that truck trailer story, of the trailer storage area at the back of the site, which is shown in the plans. The second one was relative to, on the east side of the building, it's a, it's a 1,200 foot, a 1,200-foot-long building, so we had originally parking in accessibility spaces at the north end and south end. And on the east side of the building, what we've now done is we've add three more areas of accessible parking spaces. Doesn't change the, the configuration of the parking with respect to layout. It does add some hatching areas on the plan. I believe it's a reduction of about six spaces in total, but still well above the minimum required for, for the, for the project. So, that basically will allow us, if there is more than one, two, or three tenants, we can, we can have them have their entrance with accessible areas to their, to their office areas or to the space. So, that was the second request. And the third request was, we had some grading adjustments up in the northeast corner of the, of the building on the outside. Some of the footing elevations needed to be thicker because of the type of structure that was being built. Those footings ended up coming up a little bit too close to the sidewalk elevation, so we basically raised the grade around it to accommodate those footing elevations and still provide four feet worth of frost protection in those areas. So, relatively minor changes, but they're, they're changes that, if you look at the approved plan, and then you go back out there with the, with the construction that's happening, it would look different. So, we figured we'd just go through the de minimis change project, a process, and get them on the record for, for the purposes of moving forward. That's it.
Thank you. Adam, what is the process for a de minimis change? I've been here for a few.
It's an administrative process. So, they're required to submit a letter and these red-lined plans. The board gets to determine whether they feel the changes fall within the de minimis category. You know, looking at this, the parking lot restriping, I think, may even be below de minimis because they're, they're just restriping something that is already there. Bill and I talked about that. It makes sense on a project of this scope with, of investment that everything be dotted and crossed, so I don't think that's a, a pore. The foundation footing adjustments could potentially be captured and as-built as a field change, again, based on the investment. I think it's worthwhile, the board looking at it, but it really is a construction thing. They didn't know what was there until they were there. And then, the one that, that jumps out the most to me is the, the additional material being stored. It increases the height of the, the berm, which is functionally a sound barrier. So, that actually has a net benefit. My concern was stormwater runoff and, and all of that. Jeff has looked at it, signed off on it, and, you know, in conversation with Bill, I think it makes sense. There's a larger amount of impervious, or of pervious area for that to run down. It's avoiding additional traffic on the roads. I think there's some, again, net benefits in the long term. So, I think in general, all of this is a lot of field construction-related changes. I don't see a major impact on this, and having, Jeff having looked at it, I think it, it all sort of is neat and tidy at this point.
Well, that, that answers, I was, my question was going to be about stormwater, but if Jeff has looked at it and signed off, then that's.
Technically, there actually is a reduction in the impervious area by about 5,000 square feet with this layout.
So much the better. I'll turn to, again, other members of the board to see what questions they may have.
Mr. Allison, just.
I'll jump in.
Oh.
So, this is the, the third or the fourth de minimis change on this project, Adam?
Probably. I think it's the third.
Okay.
Because there was the.
Yeah, one was for, one was for a curten drain.
Yeah, the curten drain.
Because we had a groundwater issue.
I think there was a small one up front with the introduction of the wall for the basin adjacent to the septic system.
That was, that was on the plans originally, yeah. There's a wall by the, by the culvert that goes under the road, but that was on the plans as well.
Okay.
Or maybe that, that might have been, that might. Or maybe that might have been, that might, I've lost track, Matt, to be honest with you, but I think.
I think it is the third.
Yeah. It's either the second or third.
And I'm sure it's not a design-build kind of thing, but, you know, as Adam did, it should be really tight because it's a very large investment. My concern is that a small change here, a small change there, a small change here, you add them all up, it's not de minimis anymore.
I think that these are de minimis, if we had small changes that were cumulative to a larger change, I think I would agree with you, but these are, I think, matter of fact, not, I think I would agree with you at that point in time. If we added parking and added parking and added parking, then all of a sudden, that becomes a bigger change, but we're kind of, some of them are more construction-related, relative to, you know, the excess fills that we had on the property. That's really related to when we got the project approved, really didn't know what was in the ground. We had a lot of boring and test information, but until you get in there and start digging around and pulling the materials that were buried in the site for years and decades, I should say, not even for years, but for decades and decades, and you sift through that, you don't know what's going to be usable and what's not going to be usable. So, that was really, that was probably the actual, that was really the only real de minimis change that we were filing for, but we figured since we're adjusting some sidewalks for additional accessible parking, since we had a little, we had a frost confirmation, excuse me, on elevation around the big building, we figured we'd wrap it all into one request. And I don't think there are going to be more, but I think that we'd rather come in as part of this process to go over these, you know, minor changes in what I look at as being a minor change versus coming back with the ASVIL plan, asking forgiveness that we changed these things without the board knowing about it. So, and I think that's the purpose of the de minimis change process.
And I would agree with you in general, Mr. Allison, that if there's a multitude of changes that fundamentally alter the project, then it doesn't, it becomes not de minimis at some point. I think with a project of this size, when the de minimis changes don't inextricably alter the layout or function of the site, which I don't think any of these have to this point, I mean, the curtain drain was a protective measure, that again, was something that construction unearthed. This, the biggest change in this, this plan is the trailer layout. It actually pulls the trailer parking further away from the residential areas and increases the noise protection without really functionally changing the way the site will operate and reducing impervious cover. So, I take your point, and I agree with you, and I, ultimately, it's the board's determination whether they feel it's de minimis or not. But I think when, I think if we were looking at a 10,000-square-foot retail on an acre, this level of changes, you know, I could say, well, yeah, that's a lot for a relatively small project. This is a massive project, and to date, I haven't had any complaints or issues crop up that I'm aware of down there. Again, it's ultimately the board's call, but I think we have to also look at the scale and scope of the project.
And Chairman Allison, I also echo what Adam has just said, and that, you know, the intention's not to, you know, add these things up over time, but we've tried to be in contact with the, with his office as well as the board as much as possible during this, and for a project of this scale, to have, quite frankly, as few changes as we've had, I think is also commendable to the construction team in how they've been able to put the project together. But do we, but for the future, for the future, absolutely noted, and we'll try to make sure that if we can avoid these, we will, but I think, like I said, I would rather come to you ahead of time with these changes and make sure that we're all on the same page versus coming up with the ASVIL plan and asking that the board just accept them at that point in time.
But, I mean, I guess, and this in itself, it seems de minimis, and our review engineer has looked at it, and he agrees, he had no comments, so I'm not picking this change apart, I just wanted to bring that up.
Nope, duly noted.
For members of the involved. But have you rerun your stormwater calculations? Because you said you raised some of that area up, and I don't see any drainage on this plan, I mean, it doesn't need to be, but.
The drainage did not change, we just, we didn't show the drainage structures on that particular plan. That's more, that's a grading plan, is what that sheet's for, but the drainage structures were installed per the original plan. I think the only one that may have changed was the catch basin at the far corner of the truck parking area that got moved forward to be in the paved area. The sound wall is going to be installed at the exact same location as was originally approved, even though we're increasing the berm in that far corner as well. So, we've tried to minimize any of the changes that we've made.
So, was that a yes, you did rerun the stormwater runoff counts, or no?
We did not, but we did review that with Adam and Jeff, and the reduction in impervious area leads one to believe that there would be a reduction in the amount of flow going to those catch basins as well. We didn't think it warranted it a full-blown analysis to, for reduction in pavement.
So, yeah, so you being a design engineer, you should be in the know about the changes that you're making, the effects on it, and I trust that you are.
I'm very much, I'm very comfortable with the changes we've made, and knowing that the drainage system is sufficient for what we're doing.
All right. Do we have any other questions or thoughts from members of the board? Hearing none, I would look for a motion.
I will move that we accept the request for de minimis change from Lunenburg Central, 475 Leamster Shirley Road.
Thank you, do we have a second?
A second.
I'll second.
All right, we will have a roll call vote. Mr. Allison?
I'm in favor, aye.
Ms. Reed?
Aye.
Mr. Willsner?
Aye.
And an aye for myself. Great, very good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming before us, and.
We'll see you soon.
Yes.
With unchanged ASVILs.
What's that?
Said with unchanged ASVILs.
Yes. If we're with a new project.
Thanks, man.
Great, now we're looking at reviewing and endorsement of two decisions.
Yeah, so these are the decisions the board approved at the last meeting.
Yep.
Highland and Reservoir are both stormwater permits for individual homes. We wrote up the decision, if there's wording or otherwise that needs to be changed, we certainly can do that, otherwise, it's just a matter of getting them endorsed.
Okay, and do we endorse during, I mean, there's only two of us.
Well, you're the only one who can sign these.
I'm the only one who can sign, so.
We're not too worried about.
Yeah, okay. Great, so I would, let's, sorry, changing my page, so, looking at 680 Reservoir Road, do we have any thoughts or concerns or questions from the board or edits for the decision for 680 Reservoir Road?
I do, actually. Did we get any, did we reach out with all conservation, or did they have any input from the last meeting, the concerns we brought up?
Concerns?
They wanted to do stump removal.
Yes, conservation was fine with that.
Okay. Oh, we made it.
I had spoken to the Chair of the Commission prior to the meeting, and he had endorsed them doing that.
Thank you.
All right, I see that you added the two special conditions I remember us discussing, the trash rack.
Yep.
Shall be installed at both ends of the eight-inch north-south draining pipe, and any clearing undertaken prior to the recording of the decision at the Worcester Northern Registry of Deeds shall be contained within the proposed driveway area. All required erosion control around the area to be cleared shall be installed prior to any tree removal, in addition to our standard conditions.
Correct.
Now, do we approve the decision, or is it just?
You've approved the decision.
That's why.
Yeah, so it would just be signing it.
Okay, great.
Then if, if there were something that someone disagreed or felt that there was a language change that they would like to see, then we could do that, and you would then endorse it.
Yeah, but we don't need a vote or anything.
No.
Okay, great. So, we should take a look at 319 Highland as well, and just see if there's any other questions or discussion from the board on that.
I have another similar question. Did we reach out, or was there any input from the building, the DBW Director, on that issue?
He said his issues were satisfied with what they had put in, and he's going to keep an eye on the driveway and make sure it meets the things that they spoke about.
And that was asked by our last meeting?
Yes, I saw him the following day.
Very good, thank you.
Great, and I see the three special conditions we discussed at the meeting. At least as I remember them, very good. Hearing nothing else from the board, I believe we can then move on from this. Adam, when do you need us, those who need to come in to sign? How soon does this need to be signed for things to work out well?
I think they would, I mean, you can sign them tonight.
Yeah, I can sign them tonight, I'm asking for your friends at home.
They would clearly like them as soon as possible.
Okay.
So, whenever anyone is feeling better and feels that they can safely be around other humans without spreading whatever germs they feel that they have, I would appreciate if they would make their way to the Britor Building to sign.
Very good. And that wraps our looking at the decisions and plans. We, next up is comprehensive permit application, Pondview Commons.
Not a whole lot. The traffic engineer's initial review has come back and been forwarded to the applicant. They have a meeting scheduled for Wednesday of this week. The zoning board has retained Professional Services Corporation and Tom Houston to do the engineering peer review for them. My understanding is that as of today, they have not received any funds to do so, so nothing has started there, so I'm not sure exactly what the discussion will entail on Wednesday evening.
All right, so for Mr. Willsmer's sake, the Pondview Commons, you may have been, before you were on the board, kind of, you may or may not have been following that 40B development.
Yep.
As it goes through the town, but Adam gives us updates. There's not a lot we do as the planning board, other than when appropriate, send our thoughts along to the ZBA. Because they, because it's a comprehensive permit that goes to ZBA, everything, they handle everything, and we kind of chime in when appropriate. Would you say that's an accurate representation?
Yes, because we don't have 10% of our housing stock as affordable per the DHCD rules. When someone wants to build affordable housing, they can sort of shove it through in a comprehensive permit process that brings all of the permitting bodies to the zoning board and says, here, now the zoning board gets to decide for everybody.
Gotcha, okay.
So, it's challenging at best, which is what that big fancy binder over there is, so you get to take that home and read through it if you'd like, and I can forward you the board's comment letter.
Okay.
Which they spent a good amount of time putting together, and that'll just at least give you an idea of where the board's coming from and their thoughts on it.
Sure, yeah, that'd be great.
One more thing, if I may add to that, I believe they're on the Sewer Commission scheduled meeting for tomorrow.
Yes, I believe you're correct.
All right, very good. Any other discussion on Pondview Commons and the comprehensive permit? Hearing none, we will move on. Board discussions. We have master plan RFP and driveways and entrances.
So, not a lot to talk about on the RFP. I made the changes we discussed at the last meeting. They've gone to the Assistant Town Manager. They will be in the central register, I believe, this week. So, I'm compiling a list of firms to have her solicit from. We should have bids returned by the end of the month, if not early January, and then we will go ahead and choose the selected applicant based on the selection criteria and look to be kicking off in the April-May timeframe.
Just for my own notes, you said that you expected bids to be returned by early January?
Yeah, by the turn of the year.
All right, great. Anything from the board on the master plan RFP? Very good, Adam, thanks for taking care of that.
Thank you for all your input.
And to our members on Zoom, it is a fine line to determine if you are looking to speak or not, so if I accidentally do move us on and you were going to unmute, just trample over me and correct me that we're not really done talking. And so, driveways and entrances, I think.
I think this is on hold, I will get the materials that we have to Mr. Willsmer, and then when everybody's able to sit together in the same room, it'll, I think, be a better conversation than over Zoom, I find these challenging.
I find, I like all Zoom, or all in the same room. I agree about the mixed challenge. But again, if there's anyone from the board who wants to talk about that, please speak up.
Through the chair, I'm glad to have Mr. Willsmer with us, with the experience, professional experience with right of way. I'm sure you've got some understanding on driveways and road cuts and curb cuts and some extra input you can give to us, I hope.
A little bit, hopefully.
Excellent. Thank you. All right, next up is minutes approval for our meeting from November 28th, as well as the public hearings on the 28th for 680 Reservoir Road and 319 Highland Street.
I will move that we approve the minutes of 11:28-22 regular meeting, 11:28-22 680 Reservoir Road, and 11:28-22 319 Highland Street minutes.
Do we have a second?
I will second.
Very good. We'll do a roll call vote. Now, can, does Mr. Willsmer vote on that?
He can, he doesn't have to.
Okay.
Because it's ministerial as opposed to regulatory.
Okay, great, thank you. All right, holding their roll call vote, Mr. Allison?
I'm in favor, yes, aye.
Yep, Ms. Reed, Mrs. Reed?
Aye.
Mr. Willsmer?
Aye.
And an aye for myself. Very good. Committee report, now we're just flying through things. Committee reports. Open Space Ad Hoc Committee.
Yeah, that's me. We have not been able to attain a quorum from the last two meetings. Our next meeting is this Wednesday. Yes, this Wednesday. I'll report there.
All right, thank you. Lunenburg Municipal Building Design Committee. Lunenburg Municipal Building Design Committee.
That's me again, and I think it's been three meetings that we haven't had, so there's no report there.
Very good. Agricultural Commission.
Again, and pretty much the same story. We haven't met for twice because we have, no, the last time, I can put the agenda in time, the previous time we didn't have a board, but we are going to be meeting this Thursday.
Very good. Capital Planning Committee is me. The Capital Planning Committee has met twice since our last meeting. I had a engagement I could not get out of for one of those meetings and was sick for the other. I have to finish reviewing them, but I can say that my understanding is that our numbers have been submitted to the town manager, and I think I saw an email earlier today saying that we need to make, that we may need to make some format edits to that, so that process is not quite complete, but we're in the home stretch. Economic Design Development Committee is me, and we have not met since the last meeting. I'm not mistaken, no, okay, great. Stormwater Task Force.
We have not met since our last meeting, and I'm not sure if I remember right, to just be the beaver, did you say we were not meeting in December?
That's correct, they're gonna take December off and meet again in January.
Okay, perfect.
Very good, and continuing with Ms. Reed, we have MRPC and MJTC, as she wishes.
So MJTC didn't meet this month, will meet in January. MRPC, we met last week on Thursday, the 8th. Couple of things that they mentioned, there's a lot of grant money coming to MRPC and to individual towns. I'm sure our town manager is aware of that. Basically, the state is paying more grant money upfront, so they're working on a few different things in the communities to see kind of where they can get the grant money allocated and if there are any more, I guess, grant money to come in for the MRPC. There wasn't much more than that, it's kind of winding down with the end of the year, but we meet again next month, so hopefully we'll have more information then.
Very good, thank you. We're moving on to director's items, and now we're moving, oh, unless there is something secret there in that blank.
No, there's nothing secret.
All right. And then we're moving on to our meeting schedule, with our next meeting slated for, or our meetings in general are 6:00 PM at Town Hall. Funny enough, we're not planning on meeting on December 26th.
It's actually the holiday observance, so the Town Hall won't be open.
Oh, there we go. Makes that decision easy. And then we have meetings coming up on January 9th and the 23rd. Is there anything else we're supposed to observe here about any of that? Okay. Ongoing items.
This is the standard stuff, you know, the municipal buildings and the environmental support policy were from the select board. The board has tabled them pending discussion with the chair of both of those committees, who is the same person. Zoning changes to manage growth is sort of to address the potential introduction of water and sewer on Chase Road. The board has decided that getting some input through the master plan process would be an important part of making an informed decision on that. Zoning for MBTA communities, I am working with MRPC to get a draft together of the action plan, which is due at the end of January, so you'll see them sometime in January to review that. Zoning infrastructure and master plan is tied back in with zoning changes to manage growth. I've got to consolidate those into one item. Pondview Commons, we talked about, and Northfield Road, the Parks Commission property, the chair of the Parks Commission came to the board and inquired about reaching out to Lufa Farms, who is purchasing and proposing to build a significant indoor cultivation facility behind the Hanaford adjacent to land the town purchased on Northfield Road in order to provide an access easement through their property to the town's property in order to lessen the potential traffic load on Northfield Road. I have communicated with them, we had a tech review meeting with them this morning about their potential building. They have some concerns, both with food security and liability for folks who may be traveling. They're looking at what amount of access the commission may be looking for and how that may impact their operations, so it's an ongoing thing that they're certainly discussing.
And we have seen no, just as a board, we have seen no plans or anything yet from Lufa Farms, correct?
Correct, that's correct.
Great.
Today was the first time they've really shown anything, and they're, you know, they're probably at about 25% on their design right now. They're still in their due diligence phase, and I suspect it'll probably be spring when they come for permitting.
Great, all right, thank you, Adam. We will, oh, was there anything from the board on any of that?
May, through the chair, I was looking at all the meetings this week, and I thought I saw Lufa Farms on one of the agendas. I thought it was a slackboard, I just looked at the problem.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not aware, I know that their team was down from Montreal today and that they had a fair amount of people in. I may, perhaps they're on the sewer commission?
Possibly, okay.
I know that they're essentially looking to reuse the engineering that was done for infrastructure and access from Bright Farms with a different facility for their purposes.
You were right on, Adam, because you got the initial tech review from the sewer commission, yep, tomorrow.
Great.
Every once in a while, I get it right.
All right, looking for public comment. Do we have any members of the public with us?
Nope.
Oh, that's easy. Board comment or concerns? I just want to make a comment and say thank you to our members who attended from home tonight, both for keeping your butts at home if you're feeling ill, as well as for still logging into the meeting so we could get town business done. Best to both worlds. Any other board comment or concerns?
I agree with the best of both worlds comment and appreciate the effort of the buck. I would like to mention, I brought it up a meeting or two ago, about the, who's there, they're not downstairs, the drop-off bins at Hanaford Walmart. In the last three or four times I've been there, they have been extremely neat, and I don't know if there's been something done or said or any action taken.
They have been contacted, they've installed cameras, and they know that the town was displeased with the orderliness of them recently.
Okay, thank you.
Has even handed a phrasing as I have ever heard. Lovely. All right. Any other board comment or concerns? I want to say congratulations to Mr. Willsmer as well for surviving this first meeting.
Sure.
And may there be many more. That said, I would take a motion to adjourn. Just need a second.
Second.
Excellent, by roll call vote, Mr. Allison.
Aye.
Mrs. Reed.
Aye.
Mr. Willsmer.
Aye.
And an aye for myself. Have a good night, everybody, and rest up.
Thank you, great job, Mr. Burner.
Great job, thank you.